The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Wyatt.
Hi.
Or here.
I don't.
Uh, Reiter.
Here.
Stuhl.
Here.
Cook.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Okay.
So I'd like to make a motion to begin with.
Okay.
That we move to amend the agenda to include council approval of a public statement following the consent agenda and moving the audit discussion that's on the agenda at the last thing up to the first item of general government.
Do I have a second?
One second.
Roll call.
Did you get all that or do I need to?
Just a second. Alright, so Wyatt.
Hi.
Stuhl.
Hi.
Cook.
Hi.
Lawson.
Aye.
Reiter.
Hi.
Alright, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve it?
Okay.
Second.
Any questions? Right. Roll call. I mean, not roll call. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion carried. Okay, next item then is the approval of the public statement. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve it.
I would second that.
Okay. Discussion? Alright.
Any questions on how we drafted that today?
No. Okay.
And just for clarification, it was forwarded to you all at my direction, but there was no reply to all. It was just given to you in advance of the meeting tonight and there was no discussion of it at all other than my submission to you guys to review before tonight.
Jeff, do you have any questions?
No ma'am, I'm good.
Okay. Okay. Roll call.
Reiter.
Aye.
Wyatt.
Aye.
Stuhl.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Hey, this is a public statement. It says in the process of preparing the next fiscal year's budget, we've all become aware of a financial scenario where expenses have far exceeded revenue. Reasons for this are currently being thoroughly investigated and evaluated. At the moment, we are not aware of anything illegal or improper which has contributed to this situation. Resolving this problem will require a short-term borrowing and significant spending cuts in the immediate future. We are committed to being as transparent as possible with Hudson's residents while we navigate these challenges and we are optimistic about the future financial stability of our city. Mayor Gail Barnes and Hudson City Council. So you're going to see on tonight that we do have on tonight's agenda to order an audit from the state, which could give us then a more precise understanding of where we're at and how this occurred. We've also asked former mayor George Whistle, he has graciously volunteered to offer his accounting expertise as well as his grasp of Hudson's financial situation to help us better understand how and why we're in this position. I myself and city council members have been in conversation over the last several days with citizens who have asked questions and expressed concerns about the current situation. It's our plan to remain accessible and transparent with you all about these matters going forward and we will keep you informed on what we've learned and how we proceed. So, welcome everybody to tonight. We will go ahead then and move into citizens' requests and oral presentations. Just to let you know, I don't, Chrissy has people signed up.
Uh, they would be on, they'd be on the sign-in sheet.
The sign-in sheet to speak tonight? Okay. Okay. We are going to limit comments to three minutes a person.
Make sure you state your name and your address before you speak.
If.
So that the clerk can keep track of who says what and keep in mind that she's taking notes of everything, so give her some grace because she's got to keep track of everything that's said. And it's not a Q and A. It's your opportunity to state whatever you like, but it is not a Q and A.
Okay. Somebody want to start or you want me to just go down the list or?
On behalf of the taxpayers.
You say your name and add. And the address.
408 Trimrose Drive.
Thank you. Thank you.
On behalf of the taxpayers, we put together a petition to have you guys submit to the state auditor's office, Rob Sands' office. We would, we just request that it's a third party and we feel that is the most neutralized that can, you could possibly have.
Okay.
We have the audit here or the petition here.
Okay. Okay. Will come that is submitted then.
You said you actually have the petition. Can you provide a copy of that to the clerk so that she, do you have, do you only have that one copy?
Oh, you got it.
You got an extra for her to keep on file, that would be great.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else?
Your opportunity.
So I know it's not a Q and A, but are you able to clarify at all exactly what the $350,000 loan approved at the last special meeting was? Or?
Or.
How it's supposed to, what it's.
We can't hear you very clearly.
Um, I asked if they could clarify what the $350,000 loan approved in the February meeting? What that was for to be used and how it will be repaid?
So again, it's not a Q and A, but I can tell you on behalf of them that they've done some short-term borrowing.
Okay.
And that would be for all expenses. There's not any, there's not even one particular thing, it's short-term borrowing for all expenses.
What was the last?
Uh, it's a short-term loan that actually is supposed to be paid off when the property tax payment comes in in the spring. And it's, and it's a line of credit. It's not a. I'm sorry.
What's the interest rate?
I don't know the answer to that. It's set to close tomorrow. The actual note will close tomorrow.
Any other comments? Okay. We'll go ahead then. I'm sorry.
John Weaver, two or three seconds, Rick. One of the items I read was about possibly cutting funds to the library. And I think one thing this community has a need of is after-school care and after-school activities. So I think that is a, a problem that we have and cutting things to the library, that means that's a big asset to the children that they go to and I just don't think that that'd be a wise choice to get the funding from.
Okay. Appreciate that, thank you. Anybody else?
Well, you guys didn't specifically say, but who, who, what party are you guys going to have do the audit? Have you decided on that or?
So the audit discussion is another action item on the agenda, so you'll be able to listen to the whole discussion on, on whether or not they're choosing to do another audit and all of that. That's going to be first right after general government.
Okay.
Who was that?
Matt Holmes.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't see back there.
I have a, I have a line this way.
Okay. We'll move then into general government. The Hudson City Council maintains the right to waive the first and second readings of the ordinances presented and may pass the third and final reading of the same ordinance within the same council meeting. We'll go to item A then.
Hang on a second.
Yeah.
I'm seeing a bunch of names signed in here and I just want to make sure before we move on, did anyone else want to say anything? I didn't know if, if you knew that that was your time to speak up, go ahead.
I do have a question, I thought he made a motion to move the item H, uh, number one.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just going to call it.
We just haven't gotten there yet.
Yeah.
We haven't gotten to general government yet, that's what we're calling into now. He just wanted to make sure there wasn't any other members of the public that want to speak during public comment because that's your, this is your last shot to do that.
Right. Because when we get into the, um, yeah, general government items, it'll be a discussion amongst us. Okay?
Once.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. So then we will move in general government, item H, discussion potential action regarding council request for additional audit to be performed by state auditor.
Okay, I'm going to start this one off because I think anyone that has all the information has been in contact with the state audits office. Um, I spoke with Sonia Heitzusen today. Sonia is at the auditor's office, the one that requests any audit information to go through. So I told her kind of, you know, in a nutshell, what we're looking for, what's going on here. She has advised me of two separate options. The first that we can do, can everybody hear me? Okay. Is to request a re-audit of 2023 because we do not have the 2024 audit done yet. In 2020, the 2023 audit, Chrissy, correct me if I'm incorrect, was received and processed in by the council on July 11th of '24, right?
Yep.
And that was the 2223 year. So 2324 year is being worked on. We have been in touch with our CPA who does the municipal audits. Um, and that is in the process, the problem being it's slow because there are so few CPAs that do municipal work any longer because of all the challenges with it. So, we can request 23 to be re-audited, that is paid for at the state auditor's office expense, it is not a expense paid by Hudson. If there are anything missed or any concerns of that audit, they would then obviously bring them to us and we could dig further into that. I requested that already as a councilperson, so I sent a formal request to Sonia Heitzusen at the auditor's office to do a re-audit of 202223 year, just to make sure there's nothing we missed. That will take a few months, they told me, it is not an instant process. The second option would be to hire the, the state auditor's office to do a full, separate audit in addition to the one we already have coming, which would be at our cost to pay them to do. They are finding out what the cost is, I've asked, can you give me a starting out amount? Can you give me an overall amount? Can you give me anything? And they wouldn't do that, but they're going to talk about it tomorrow and try to email me, which anybody who works with government knows what that means, so, wait maybe. However, she said her first recommendation would be to do the re-look and then get with our CPA to find out when our current audit will be completed and then we can request an additional if we wish to at that point. So again, just so everybody understands, the 2324 audit will probably not be done until July, because that's when we got, 2223 was in July too. So she has all the information, she worked with our office. Chrissy, what month do they normally come in the auditors? They were in.
It depends on their, it depends on their schedule. Sometimes it could be December, uh, this year it was in October.
It was in October that they were here? So, maybe we'll get it a little bit sooner than July if they were here earlier in the year, you know, maybe. We don't know and can push as much as we can. But once we get that audit and are able to review that, once it's filed with the auditor's office, we could do the same thing and ask for a re-look at that audit, once we submit it at their cost and then figure out what to do. So again, I have already submitted a formal request as a, as a city of Hudson council member. I have requested from the state auditor's office a re-audit of 20, of year 2023. Um, and they will be in contact with me hopefully tomorrow to give me dates or anything like that.
Who does our regular audits?
Rochelle.
Thompson.
Thompson.
She's out of Hampton. Okay.
And that audit is on the website, the link to the audit is on the list of meeting minutes, right?
Yes.
Because I pulled it up, so.
And, and the special audits that we would be asking the state to do, would those be considered a forensic audit?
I don't know if that's the word they would use.
No.
No. I would, I would say no. That, that, they have a general term for an audit, which they're going to have the same standard as Rochelle Thompson would. And, and I'm not a CPA, I, I just having watched audits over the last 20 years, an audit is dependent on the auditor doing it. Which she told me today too. And then. An audit, so I, I, an audit's only as good as the auditor doing it. I mean, I, you, you have some auditors that might really focus on individual transactions and other auditors that might focus more on your budget in broad brushstrokes. So now whether or not you could ask, you know, this is the deep dive that we're looking for, is a question I couldn't really get today from their website.
So would there be value in looking at an, another company to come in, somebody out of the business world to come in and do a forensic audit?
So that would, that gives you a lot more ability to direct what you want done. In terms of cost, I, I, I can't, I mean, I, I don't know, it's an hourly fee, you know, a state audit ranges easily north of 5,000, usually it's 5,000, 15,000 depending on what they dig into. A, a private CPA, you know, again, you might, you might end up with a quicker time turnaround. I don't, that's, it's possible. And you could also, you could specify a budget if you wanted to do that. If you wanted to do a specific audit for specific things, that you would probably want to do a private CPA in order to contemplate that.
One of the things I just want to mention in response to Lori, what you brought up is when I first heard the term forensic audit, and I'm saying this for our benefit and for everyone's benefit, when I first heard the term forensic audit, I automatically thought CSI.
Somebody's dead.
Someone did something really bad. And that's not necessarily what that means. A forensic audit doesn't mean we expect wrongdoing or criminal activity. A forensic audit means it's an audit where you go back in history forensically and make sure everything adds up the way that, that previous audits have indicated that it does. So I, I just, I want to make sure we don't push the alarm buttons by using the word forensic. Now it's, it's well within the realm of possibility, I think that statement was pretty clear. At this point, we're not aware of anything illegal or improper that's been done, but I've talked to enough people the last few days that those questions are out there and so we owe it to ourselves and to the citizens to make sure that that's the case, which is why I think that we're all in favor of a third-party audit, like you mentioned, Matt. What I'm learning here is, I, I don't know if we're ready to pull the trigger on hiring the state auditor tonight, because I'm not sure that that's how due process goes.
Right. And I don't want anybody to have the misconception that we can call the state auditors tomorrow and say, we want you to do an audit and next week they're going to be here and we're going to have this plethora of information, because that's not how it works. You could pursue to, to, to request a state audit, but they're probably not going to touch it for a number of months because you don't even have your existing audit done yet.
You've already triggered the 2223 audit.
Yes. The re-audit on that, I've already triggered that formally requested.
And we didn't need to obviously do any.
No, because I can request it as a city councilperson and since there's no cost to us, there's no reason for us not to.
Did, did I hear you say that, um, once the 2324 audit is back to us from whatever that gal's name is? That we could then request the auditor's office to do.
A re-look of that.
A re-look of that. And that would also be free.
Correct. Once it's been filed with the state.
Months down the road.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Obviously.
Which either way, if you request an audit from the state, it's going to be months down the road anyway.
Exactly. What if we, what if we went with a, a business doing a forensic type audit? Would that require us to wait for the?
That's not, we'd have to explore that option.
We'd have to check with them to see what their schedule looks like.
Or what they do, if they.
Yeah.
Would do it without that. CPA and tax season right now that is.
Yeah.
We have a.
As I mean, it's a lot.
Well, Bergen KDV still exists as a forensic auditing team. Creative Planning bought them out for the most part, but Bergen KDV does still exist as a forensic audit team. So I guess I, I don't know what other businesses are out there that do that kind of work, but I would like to know more about that and, you know, what, have a little more information to go on before we make a decision.
I think there's, I mean, we've only had the meetings that we've had, which have been public meetings, and so I've had a conversation with everybody about this, but I, I know that from the tone of the meetings that we've had and, and the conversation that we've had, that there's going to be a, I would assume unanimous support for a third-party audit of some kind. And I like sooner than later.
Me too.
But I also understand, you know, there's not a fast food audit place, but.
There's not. I mean, there could be, but you're not going to get any good results anyway. But we do not have an action item to do anything on this tonight, this is discussion. Oh yeah, you do.
Oh yeah.
I drafted it so it was discussion, potential action.
Perfect.
Yeah, you can. So we could, somebody could make a motion to have, to find or get proposals, is that what you would do as far as contacting? Yep, you can, you can direct for an RFP, you can move to have an RFP from private firms regarding. A 2324. 2324 audit.
I like that.
Go ahead.
I don't, I don't know what timeframe, you, you know what I mean, I don't, when we say RFPs, you can also just get requests for quotes, you don't necessarily, you don't have to do it as, it's a professional service, so you don't have to do it as an RFP process. You can just do it as a quote process. So Gail could call Bergen KDV and ask, you know, what's your availability and hourly rate for, um, a, a, our municipal audit review of our 2324 finances? And then she calls the next CPA firm and then reports back to you what the hourly rates are, et cetera. And calls three different firms and finds out what their availability is and that, that's going to give you some idea on, you know, these people can get started right away or, or we can't start until April 15th, I, you know what I mean, I, I don't know what those answers are going to be.
I move that we authorize the mayor to proceed with getting some quotes and learning a little bit more about what's out there for, for an official audit.
For a private, sort of, state audit at this, a private audit.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Oh, I forgot Jeff was there.
I'm hiding in the corner, guys.
Hi Jeff.
Hey.
Is there, is there, now it's discussion, right?
Yeah.
So is there any way that we can include in the minutes the fact that this 2022, 2023 audit has been.
Requested.
Initiated.
Yep.
That should already be, yeah, she already has that.
And then, and then I guess there's, I, I'd like to put in the record an openness, maybe there's not an appropriate way to do this, but an openness for us to.
Share those findings?
Well, obviously that, but, but an openness to also consider a state audit.
As we move through this.
Depending on how, what we find out from these guys.
Does that need to be part of the motion?
No, you're never going to lose the opportunity to request a, a formal state audit as well.
Okay.
It's really about, it's really about time, money and cost. You know, you don't. Yeah, Jeff, sorry.
One question I got, so we're talking 2223, can we do 2324 if we do a private audit?
That's what she's going to ask them.
Yep.
Okay.
So we're doing both. Both or close on that?
Both, right?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
The, the 2223 one, Jeff, is a look back at the audit that was already completed. The 2324 would be an additional audit alongside the one that's not yet completed from our regular auditor. Does that make sense?
Right, yeah, I, it's going to be a deeper dive than probably what happened on the 2223, but yep, that's what I wanted to make sure of.
Potentially, right. And once we get those, the quote request, we could make, you know, motion as to what we want deeper dive on too. Right?
Okay. Any other discussion?
You could, I mean, this is just an example, but, you know, the, the billing software G-Works has been quirky. Um, I know it's been quirky for multiple city clerks, so you could have the auditor focus on the G-Works and the reconciliations on G-Works, which are your utility bills specifically, right? You could, you can highlight that as an area that you want the auditor to look at to find out if there are, I mean, if G-Works isn't working, we want to know that G-Works isn't working as our billing software, right?
Right.
Um, so that when you ask if you could take a deeper dive into it, those.
Into specific spot areas.
Those would be, that would be a specific thing, you could ask them to. Well, and I can, in, in response to some things I've heard too, even here tonight, I can, when I hear back from Sands' office more, I, you know, I've talked with them four or five times now, um, I can also ask if it's a possibility that we can get on a schedule for doing it, if there's a, you know, like, you just get on a schedule and then we can pay it if we do it, or can we, um, if, if, if we get this private audit and it satisfies what we need, we can cancel that additional, you know what I mean?
Yep.
Rather than waiting and then getting on a schedule later, just like I heard from out there. Um, so I'll ask that question and can bring that back as well.
Sounds good. Any other discussion? Okay, roll call.
Cool. Lawson.
Aye.
Wyatt.
Hi.
Uh, Reiter.
Hi.
Cook.
Hi.
Alright, motion carries five, zero.
Okay. Now we'll go into, um, item A, discussion action to approve the third reading of ordinance nine 18 and ordinance amending the Hudson City Code 2017, chapter nine, water rates, section 92.02, rates for service. I have a motion.
Second. We'll admit.
Discussion? Roll call?
Aye. Reiter.
Aye.
Uh, Lawson.
Aye.
Stuhl.
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries five, zero.
Okay, item B, discussion action to approve the third reading of ordinance nine 19 and ordinance amending the Hudson City Code 2017, chapter 99, sewer rate charges, section 99.01, sewer service charges required. Motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, sorry.
Thanks. Any discussion? Roll call?
Stuhl.
Aye.
Wyatt.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
Reiter.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries five, zero.
Okay. Item C, discussion action to approve the third reading of ordinance nine 20 in ordinance to amend the Hudson City Code 2017, chapter 106, collection of solid waste, amending the, uh, following language, collection fees. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Reiter.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Wyatt.
Aye.
Stuhl.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
Motion carries five, zero.
Okay. Item D, discussion action to approve the second reading of ordinance nine two one and ordinance amending chapter 65, stop or yield required, section 65.02 by the Hudson City Code 2017 by adding stop sign number 46.
So move.
Second. Discussion?
Just for clarification purposes, this is, you're back here too, um, people are behind me, um, Eldora, Rainbow and Fair Oaks, is that the right street?
Yep, yep.
I always get that street name wrong. So there will be a, there's already a yield sign on one, there's a stop sign on Rainbow, yield sign on Fair Oaks, that will change to a stop sign. And then there will be a stop sign on each end of Eldora, correct? Cause it's a four way stop. Perfect, thank you.
Any other?
Not yet. We've not discussed that at public worship or at public safety.
Okay. Uh, roll call.
Wyatt.
Hi.
Sewell.
Hi, Lawson.
Hi.
Reaster.
Item E, discussion action to approve resolution three three two five. A resolution for approval of payment request number ten regarding the City Hall Community Center Update Project.
Hold on, so. First off, i- is there any punch list on any of these items on the City Hall project? Like, has there been a punch list on that project? Like where, you know, someone's gone through and been like, yep, everything's done, everything's totally done, because this is the final payment, right?
This is not. No, we'll have one more. But yes, there is.
There is a punch list.
The architect goes through.
Yeah, and we're consistent with that punch list at this point. We're, we're up to date and caught up on that punch list. Okay, um, and two, this is part of the short term lending, is it not?
Correct.
So that's up to you. You could table it until you close on the note tomorrow for the, I mean, I, we, we've been told we're gonna receive the lending. I don't have any concerns to think that we're not going to, but.
I, I actually, I, we haven't talked about this, but I was thinking about this when I was reading through it. It's, it's a difficult thing right now to approve.
I would table it until, and then we can always have a special meeting anyway to do that.
It's for work that's already done.
Right.
I mean, so we need, obviously.
We have to write the check.
Yeah. I, I'd move to table it until.
I second that until we.
I don't even know until what, I mean.
Till the loans approved?
I would, I'd move beyond that maybe, a little.
Well, I mean, everyone's already been approved, but we'll send out anything tomorrow, right, or once, hopefully, yeah. So, table it to your next meeting. To your next meeting, that gives you a few weeks to, to double check, you know, one, to confirm the short term borrowing and find out where we're at with those other expenses.
Yep, okay, I moved it with table to the next meeting.
Kate said, okay, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of tabling signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Oppose? Okay.
Chrissy, will you be contacting the contractor and letting him know where we are on that, just to keep them?
I've been in conversation with him. Okay, item F. Discussion action to approve resolution three three two six, a resolution setting a public hearing for fiscal year twenty six proposed property tax dollars for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty six. And this would be a public hearing then that we would hold on March twenty fourth. Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Reaster.
Hi.
Hi.
Wyatt.
Hi.
Lawson.
Hi.
Motion carries five zero.
Item G, discussion action to approve resolution three three two seven, a resolution for approval of road closures for the Hive Salon and Meadery and the Federal Pub Event, and this is going to be held on March first.
Thank you, I was just looking for the date to ask that name clarification, March first.
Yep.
And what roads are they?
Um, it's just the parking spots that are out in front of both businesses as well as the sidewalk. It's not the actual road.
In between here and.
Yeah, between, yeah.
Here and the bar.
Yeah, between the Hive and the pub.
Got it, thank you. I'd make that motion to a.
I have a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, and discussion? Okay, roll call.
Wyatt.
Hi. Hi.
Reaster.
Hi.
Lawson.
Hi.
Alright, motion carries five zero.
Okay, item I, to set a date and time for fiscal year twenty six budget work session.
Monday. When do we have to have it in?
Um, I have everything submitted that I need to submit, um, now. That's what the, um, the public hearing notice was. Um, so, it's really up now to you.
So it's just a final number, final approver work session?
Yeah.
Um, Mondays have worked well for everybody in the past. At that three o'clock time, does that work well for everybody again?
Yes.
Jeff, would, is next Monday gonna work for you?
That'll work fine for me.
Okay.
You think you'll be able to?
Yeah.
So, March third, every.
Is that the date of that? Yes, please.
That's an open meeting?
It's a work session.
Okay, there are three informational items in the packet. Reminder items, regularly scheduled meetings held at council chambers except for the library board. Public Safety Committee meeting, February twenty seventh. Public Works Committee meeting, March twelfth. Mayor's Task Force Committee, May eighteenth, or excuse me, March eighteenth. Personnel Admin Finance Committee meeting, March twenty fourth. Um, next two city council meetings is March tenth and March twenty fourth at six P M.
Move to adjourn.
Do I have a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you all.